Good Wayne?
We're live.
Alright, have I got to go?
Yeah.
It's the mission of Big Walnut local schools to inspire and guide each student to his or her maximum potential. I'd like to call this meeting to order with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jeremy, would you mind roll calling us?
Mrs. Dorsh?
Here.
Mr. Fuji?
Here.
Mrs. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Schneider?
Here.
And Mr. Crowe is not able to be with us this morning.
Alright, let's roll on into the superintendent's report.
Thank you. I don't have a lot today, mostly just some HR items that we have on the agenda, but did want to take a moment just to remind everybody that we sent out the start of year guidance document, which was based off of our conversations with our health department. We are planning on, again, mask being optional for school, but want to remind everybody that they are required on the bus per federal order. I sent a couple of emails out to the board where I checked with our attorney on that, so if you have any questions on that, please let me know. But that is something that is a federal requirement. The other thing, just wanted to point out that we are continuing to talk with our health commissioner. Weekly, I actually have a call with her this afternoon as things continue to evolve and change. So as we said last year, making sure that everybody knows that things could change if there are different orders or requirements or certain numbers that we see and we may want to have a discussion about. That's the plan to start the year, but lots is changing fast, but just want to remind everybody that that could change. Any questions from you all, especially with the bus piece? I wanted to make sure everyone got a chance to look at that. Alright, well, we're excited for the kids to be back very, very soon. Our staggered start will be next week, so we'll, we have the meet and greets back this year. We did spread it out again over two hours. We were able to do that two years ago, and as we've grown, that kind of gets the density of people down at one time, so we only have half the alphabet per hour. So that schedule is on the website, with also the Eagle Examiner, and then starting with the staggered start, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. So excited for next week, and that is all I have today.
Angie, how do you anticipate curriculum, excuse me, curriculum nights this year? Has there been?
We're still talking through that, but we're looking at being back to the way it was before, but trying to spread it out a little bit. So like at the elementary level, instead of having everybody there in a big session, it would be two sessions, and then the middle's more of like a free visit where they can kind of segue in between as one group's leaving and the other one's coming in. So just try to get those numbers down. And I'm not sure exactly on the secondary level what that looks like. I know they're talking about that.
I feel like if we would have to, I felt like the video options last year worked out real well, too.
We've talked about that. We got a lot of feedback from people that they like it in person, so they have a chance to, you know. So we're looking at that, but always a possibility if we need to do videos, too.
Thank you.
Anything else? Alright, thank you.
Moving on to the treasurer's report.
Okay, I don't have too much this morning. I did just want to note that in the, the by-in and budget that was approved by the legislator, as well as signed by the governor, we do have a new funding formula. There, I've been on various webinars with that, and it's a big overhaul, so things are still coming out about that. Just wanted to make sure, make you aware of it, and at some point in time, I will try to put together maybe a small infographic or something like that to give an idea of how things are flowing. It's, in any formula, there's a calculation, and then there's a local kind of charge-off, and that still remains, it's just going to look a little different. I think as we've talked about, we will get a little bit more, but not a, not a life-changing amount. So more, more to come, but wanted to make you aware that that did, that did get approved. That's really all I had this morning.
Alright, thank you.
I saw on the back to school information brochure from a neighboring district here in the county that they were talking about the school fair funding model that recently, will make changes for that particular district to the tune of 3.5 million for next year. Can you help remind me, basic amounts, ballpark for now?
I believe 90,000 is the increase for us in this school year, followed by, I think it's about 50,000 the next year. So again, not, not life-changing amounts, but a little bit more.
So as they talk about the fair funding plan approved by the state for a neighboring district at 3.5 million, and for us, over two years, 140,000?
Approximately, yes.
Thank you.
Anything else for Jeremy? Alright, let's go to board members' items of interest, seeing as we have no board policy. Sheri?
Yeah, I just have a couple of things today. First, I just want to thank everyone on the team who's been working hard this summer to get everything ready for school to start. I know it's going to feel pretty close to normal, hopefully, for our students and our, and our staff, and I know a lot of the work goes in to, to get everything ready, get all the bus routes together, get the buildings ready to go, you know, get ready with curriculum and everything. So big thank you to all of those people. Also, just want to give a shout out to the 35 students in our district who received fives on AP exams for the 2020, 2021 school year. And thank you also to the high school academic boosters who recognize those students when they go out and put signs in there in order to send, so thank you to that team for recognizing those students as well.
Excellent. Thank you. Steve, anything for you? You got it?
My only thing is just a thanks to the administrative team for the good session this last week, kind of focusing on the district's vision. I thought the exercise that we were able to participate in was, was good. It's interesting to see all of the administrators kind of in their element, and Sheri and I at one point looked at each other, and it's like, it's like they're speaking a different language, I think. But just knowing how much they are focused on really inspiring and guiding our students and determining the best way to encourage their staff to focus on that, that vision. I appreciated the opportunity to participate, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I guess I just have one thing. So yesterday was a little bit of a Murphy's Law day, kind of for me, with a lot of things breaking down and falling apart. So a little late getting to my email, but I did see one email in here earlier this morning, which I'm suspecting is maybe why some of you are all here today. But the first sentence of this email says, "I was just told by a friend of mine that critical race theory has been approved to be taught in all schools in Big Walnut District", which is pretty impressive, because I'm here every meeting and every day, and there's never been a discussion like that, there's never been a vote like that, there's never been a hint or an insinuation of anything like that. So I realize, though, that we all have busy lives and different things are going on at different times, and we've made a statement as an administration with a board support related to what we look at and what we're thinking about in terms of anything, in terms of teaching our kids and helping them understand what it's like to world, live in a world where people are different and people have different perspectives. And so Angie, if you wouldn't mind, if you've got that handy, it might be good to just restate it again for some folks that maybe didn't hear it the first time.
Sure. At Big Walnut, our goal is to create an inclusive learning environment where all students feel safe and welcome. With the death of George Floyd last year, many educators, including some in Big Walnut, reflected on how to teach diversity and acceptance of others. Some of our teachers included activities in their lessons that were aimed at getting students to reflect on race and racism. As a district, we continue teaching topics in social studies and language arts classes that address race, such as slavery and the civil rights movement. Since returning from winter break this last school year, we've had an onslaught of emails and phone calls regarding critical race theory. When we started receiving these calls and emails asking if we were teaching CRT, or in some cases, demanding that we not teach CRT, our team had to Google the term. While we had heard of critical race theory, we were not exactly sure what the theory encompassed. At that point, we had not discussed it at any district-level meetings, and while teachers continued to teach race-related lessons for our state standards, there was not an effort to teach critical race theory to our students. And I would add there that it's actually a law school-level course, is kind of where it originated, and I don't think the intent, I know the intent I've read quite a bit was never that it was for K-12 students. In the meantime, we've had other parents reach out with increased concerns about what they feel are racist comments and behaviors being directed at their children by peers. These parents have requested that we make an increased effort to focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion in our lessons. We met with our administrative team and discussed the topic. We quickly realized the complexity of the issue and that we needed to have additional discussions to create a more structured approach to teaching these topics. By these topics, I mean diversity, equity, inclusion, not critical race theory. We all agree that it will be important to emphasize teaching our students to be respectful of others' perspectives and backgrounds. While we do not teach CRT or promote a specific ideology, it is our goal as a public school district to encourage students to see multiple perspectives and use that information to formulate their own opinions as they become adults in our society. The timing of the emergence of these topics, in conjunction with the pandemic logistics, has been very challenging. To be quite frank, our team was focused on keeping our school buildings open this past year. As we head into this next school year, we will be working on how to address these topics currently making their way from the national news into our district with our students in an age-appropriate way. It's not be a quick process, but we will provide opportunities for community input and involvement. We ask for your patience as we work through this process. Our end goal will continue to be the creation of a safe, welcoming learning environment for all students. And just to add to that, we did have our administrative retreat, as Leanna mentioned, had a really good discussion with our team, and again, it was around topics that we've taught since I was in school. So it wasn't like anything, it's not, you know, I think the fear is that we're doing a curriculum that is, you know, targeting white students or trying to make them feel bad. We've not adopted any curriculum, we have no intention of teaching critical race theory, but we also recognize that some of these words that have been used for years are now landmines. And so we've been talking about, our work is really on how do we work with our staff to use age-appropriate literature, because, you know, we've taught books like To Kill a Mockingbird have been, you know, I studied that when I was in school. So these are the types of things we're talking about. And again, our intention is not to teach critical race theory, but it's not something that is a, is a quick problem. It's obviously a huge issue in our society when we think about the racial tensions and other diversity issues we have. So it's something that's going to be an ongoing issue that I think all school districts, and especially public schools, are going to need to work on. There's not going to be an overnight answer.
Thank you. So my ask to all of you is, as big of an issue, in my opinion, that race relations are and diversity issues in our country, an even bigger problem is sources of information, and what's legit information and what's illegitimate information? So whether you like that statement or you didn't like the statement you just heard, my request is you go out and accurately represent what you've heard today, or if you're watching on the stream, because the debate is certainly valid, the discussion is certainly open, but when people start throwing things out like, "I know that the district voted to approve for these things", which is not even remotely true, it only causes more division, more frustration, more anger, and more upset with everyone. So if you ever want to have a conversation about it, I've never seen anyone on our board or our administration shy away from those things, but I would ask that you make sure that you share accurate information and help us get the word out about what we're trying to do. Again, whether you like the direction or not, I'm not here to tell you what, what you should or shouldn't like. What I'm asking you to do is just accurately represent and help us try to dispel the rumors, and if you have a question about a rumor or something like that, let us know, because we're the people that can help clarify those things. So, thank you. Those are my comments for today. Alright, that brings us to public participation, and Jeremy, I think you have at least a couple of folks that have...
Yeah, we are, there are some athletes in the room, and we're going to let them go first, so they can get off to their thing. So Josie and Zeta Graziosi.
Cool. And before they get started, just going to mention this is the meeting of Board of Education and Public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business, not considered a public community meeting, so this is a time for public participation is indicated in the agenda. And basically, what that means is anybody that comes up, you've got three minutes. We just keep it to three minutes so we can keep things moving. And if you wanted to speak and you've submitted a slip, that's great. If not, you still have time to be able to do that as well. That's okay. Don't be shy, we don't bite. Do you have the paper for them?
So this is Josie and Zeta Graziosi, and they are 7515 Morrissey Loop in Galena, and they would like to speak on masks.
Welcome.
Go ahead.
One second. So when I was in the hallways and I had my mask below my nose, teachers would be watching us, and they'd come up to us directly in our faces, and they would touch us and tell us right in our face to pull our masks up. And it got super uncomfortable, because also when we were in classrooms, we'd be sitting down and they'd come right next to our shoulders and tell us to wear masks, probably 10 times each class. And it got very annoying, and I chose not to wear my mask, because when, when I did wear it correctly, I had to, I wasn't able to think, because I had headaches, my face was irritated, and my ears would hurt after a long day of wearing these. And after school, I couldn't perform for sports as I would like to, because I had low oxygen, and when I wanted a water break, the teachers would tell me only two sips and put my mask up. So it was really hard, because everyone was watching us, and... For my mask breaks, we would have to go and sit into the, sit in the hallway, and we weren't allowed to bring our work with us, and we really couldn't listen to the lesson while we were out there. And in the beginning of the school year, we got a few mask breaks outside, but near the end, we almost never got full-class mask breaks. And the only way you could really get a mask break is just by sitting in the hallway or taking a drink of water. And I often didn't have my mask on, and, because I would drink water often, and teachers would come up and keep telling me to put my mask on. When I told them I was drinking, they didn't really seem to care and just told me to put it away. The school's wor, rules were that we had to wear our mask. Our masks were pretty pointless, because one rule we had, one rule we had for them, that we had to wear our masks during recess. We could only, we had to wear our masks on the blacktop, but not in the grass area, which I don't understand, because they're pretty much the same. And another rule was we could not take our masks off until we got into, into the playground area. And I once asked my lunch monitor, there was some type of barrier guarding the playground from COVID, and she said yes, which confused me.
You got about 30 seconds left, just to give you a heads up.
So at school, we were, in the beginning, we were allowed to eat breakfast during our study hall. And then during the second half, half of school, I guess the COVID came out at the bell. We weren't allowed to eat after that, and it was, I don't know, it seems pointless, because we sit with the same people at, in our classrooms, and we're not allowed to take our masks off, but we are allowed to eat lunch with them. It just seems pretty pointless and confusing to younger kids.
Thank you for coming in and expressing your concerns.
Okay, our, our next person is Angela Graziosi. Alright, Renee Bream of 37 Letts Avenue in Sunbury is talking on Sentero.
Thank you.
Dear Ms. Hamburg and members of the Big Walnut School Board, my name is Renee Bream, resident, graduate, wife, and mother of four children, of which three have graduated from our school district. Before I begin, I'd like to say I love our community, I love our school district, I love our teachers, our support staff, but I'm here this morning to expose the evils of a company you have chosen to partner with this coming school year for the psychological counseling of our children. This company is Sentero. I'd like to take you back seven years to a meeting I had with then-school board member Mindy Meyer regarding an audio recording given to me by concerned parents in the Westerville School District. The recording was obtained by a student in the class who was shocked to hear what he, what the professional Sentero counselor was presenting to the students regarding sexual education. It was embarrassing, profane, and beyond over-the-top disgusting. After listening to the recording, I personally could not believe what this counselor presented and immediately felt the need to communicate this to my school district to protect the Big Walnut students from ever being exposed to this type of filth, whether by Sentero or any other company with access to our children. Based on the emails and meeting with Ms. Meyer, she communicated back, and I quote, "I contacted Angie Pollak, now Angie Hamburg, about Sentero, and not only did she provide the teaching targets for the various grade levels, but also some additional information taught in eighth and ninth grade. Overall abstinence has a much larger part of the curriculum than that which you forwarded to me. Relationships under construction was offered as a solid foundation for what is taught at Big Walnut", end quote. Fast forward seven years, and I opened up our Eagle Examiner to find that we are now promoting whole-child development, and I have hired, and have hired and partnered with many behavioral specialists, school psychologists, social workers, mental health specialists, elementary school counselors, Ohio Guidestone Counseling Services, and the infamous Sentero Counseling Services. Needless to say, I was shocked, absolutely shocked, to see the name Sentero on our paperwork. I understand that supposedly you have not hired Sentero for their sex education classes, but this is not enough. This company should not be permitted to step foot in our schools. They do not stand for our values, and they are a danger to our children's mental health and development. I can only assume that whoever made the decision has no idea about this company, so I'll take this opportunity to inform this board and you parents. Sentero claims that they are, they adhere to this organization National Sexuality Education Standards in their sex education classes. Do you know where the National Sexual Education Standards come from? They come from a group called CICUS. CICUS stands for the Sexual, Sexuality Information Education Council of the United States. This is not a government organization, even though their title looks like they are. They are a nonprofit organization to which Planned Parenthood groups affiliate to. CICUS began a new campaign in 2019 called Sex Education-
Thank you, that's true.
-for Social Change.
That's your three minutes. Can you kind of tighten it up and wrap it up, please?
My husband asked for three minutes to speak also, and I'm going to take his, if you don't mind.
Is that allowed? I think it's by individual.
It is by individual. So if he wants to come up and-
Would you like to finish with him?
Finish it up, that's fine. That's cool. Well, no, that's fine. We just have rules, just like you do when you're running your council meetings.
When somebody spends this much time on a presentation, we let them talk.
Okay, David.
CICUS began a new campaign in 2019 called Sex Education for Social Change. What does that mean to you, "social change"? CICUS describes change as working towards a world where all people can experience and enjoy sexual and reproductive freedom as they define it for themselves. This sounds like indoctrination to me. CICUS encourages students to unlearn stigma, misinformation, and baseless opinions. This rebranding includes activism, not just providing information. They're quoted as addressed in the critical role that sex education in our schools can play in normalizing human sexuality. CICUS is the last stages, in the last stages of their plan to transform society, a different way of living that would not include family or marriage. There is no mention of parents, Planned Parenthood and CICUS are working, parents, Planned Parenthood and CICUS are working towards societal transformation. That includes euthanistic content. Euthanistic content, consent means that anyone, at any time, at any age, can be involved in any type of sexual activity. Look at the website. Their goal is to normalize deviant sexual activity. In the audiotape I'll provide you, the Sentero counselor at Westerville Schools, after spending less than one minute mentioning abstinence as an option, goes into great detail about the specific sexual activities they could be engaging in after school today. It is sick. I could not listen to it in the truck. I had to shut it off. Sentero's adherence to the National Sexuality Education Standards do not conform to Ohio law, House Bill 110, which is the parent's right to know. This law was just passed June 30th, 2021. What does this mean and why? At this time, I would like you to open the packet I provided to you, which includes the Eagle Examiner, the CD of the Westerville North Sentero High School Sex Education Class from 2013, Sentero Healthy Bodies, Healthy Futures, Sex Education Student Packet for Middle Schoolers, Sentero Online and Reliable Sex Ed Resources. As parents, it is our responsibility to love and provide and protect our children. As a concerned citizen, I have a duty to communicate this information to everyone I know in hopes of protecting others. Sentero was a concern seven years ago, and today it is even worse, and it's in our schools. I look to the school board to educate my children. I also need you to be gatekeepers for the evil can come in to our school district from outside. You just recently said that, Brad, and you're dead on it. This is it. It's coming in from outside. It does not need to be here. As you provided last year in having a graduation ceremony for our deserving seniors, Big Walnut does not need other school districts to provide a blueprint for what happens in our schools. We can be different. We can be better. We should be better. We have been better, and we can continue to be better. In closing, I have four questions that I would like answers. Who on the school board and in our administrative offices made the decision to hire or accept Sentero Counseling Services? What was the vetting process to determine who we would hire and why was Sentero Counseling Services hired? Can I have a copy of the contract with Sentero and Ohio Guidestone? Thank you for your time and attention. And guys, this is not easy. Trust me. I love these kids. I love this school district. My whole family went through here. Every ounce of my life is in this community. We can't have it, not this. And you can say, "We're not using him for this", well, you don't have the fox guard the hen house just because the fox says, "I'm not hungry right now". Don't let him in. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And I have copies of the audio CD from 2013 from Westerville Schools that I would like to have every one of you take and take a listen to. I will email the board the questions that I have, and if somebody could get back to me before the next school, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Jeremy, do you have anybody else?
There was a continuation from Alexandra Bream also, and just wanted to see if you still would like to speak.
I was just doing that in case my mom, like, and my dad don't finish, but... It like, makes me kind of emotional, because I was listening to it last night with my little sister, and just like, her friends, and the looks on their faces, and they're in high school right now. The looks on their faces of the disgust, and like, whoa, like, I can't even believe anyone would ever say that. And like, like, we need to hold, I don't know, like, I'm going to have kids someday. I graduated, I graduated college. I'm going to have kids someday, and like, I will not send my kids to a school that's promoting this. Like, I want my kids to be held to a higher standard. Like, have more faith in our kids, because what they teach, they have no faith in the kids. They have absolutely zero faith that, like, kids can, like, make decisions, that they can be educated and, like, make good decisions. They basically just want to teach- They basically just want to teach band-aiding things. They talk about condoms for like 16 minutes in ways that I've never, ever even heard. You can even, like, you really watch, listen to this because they talk about like using a chip bag as a condom. Like, why do you need to teach your kids this? They talk 10 minutes about abstinence, or 10 seconds about abstinence, not even. And like, again, like I'm saying, like, let's hold these kids to higher standards and believe in them because we talk about how we want to inspire and guide our kids, like inspire and guide them to make good decisions and to like do what's right for their body and what's right for each other. And not, like, talk about mental health. Like, these kids, how, how can we give them this information and not expect something like, I don't know, like, how can we tell them to like, don't use a chip bag as a condom and expect them mentally to be okay? Like, that's just wild to me. But yeah, so I really would encourage all of you to listen to the CD that my mom provided. And yeah, I love Big Walnut. Hopefully my kids will go here someday, but yeah, it's just really, really hard to hear some of this stuff. And I don't know, I have friends that went to the Westerville Schools, and it's so different from Big Walnut. We had an amazing upbringing, amazing education, and I just hope and pray that it continues.
Thank you.
We have Gretchen Hofer, 14037 Centerbird Road in Sunbury, wanting to speak about the pledge and moment of silence to start the day.
Hi, good morning. Thank you, guys. My name's Gretchen Hofer, and in 2017, we had an opportunity to meet at the flag at the Big Walnut High School, really in a protest to our district taking out Operation Christmas Child, which was a benefit that our district did for 20 years, led by a teacher through the Spanish Club. And I'm sure maybe some of you, some of you do remember this. I know Angie does. And I remember, you know, it was a few years before that, I went to Big Walnut myself, and I came from a Christian school, and I ended up coming to Big Walnut two months before my brother had passed away. And I remember the first day of school, standing up and looking for the flag and looking for a cross, and it wasn't there. And what I do remember, thank God, is that we did say the Pledge of Allegiance. And I remember a student saying, "Well, we don't pray at this school." And I remember thinking, "This is the craziest thing." And so what I would like to ask our board to do is, we do say the Pledge of Allegiance at the elementary schools. I would like to ask, and I know Angie, you and I and Andy Jados had this conversation in 2017, I would like to ask our board to approve the start of our day, starting with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I would also like to see if we could approve from our board, starting our day in a moment of silence, for kids who have no faith to give a moment of thanks to their teachers, you know, raising the bar, giving a moment of thanks for all the people that put time into preparing an education for them, and time for prayer and for meditation. So I would like the Pledge of Allegiance to be approved, and I would ask if you could please take a moment to give our students one minute to start their day, to prepare for what they've been given, which is a gift. Okay? That's the first thing. The second thing is, is that regarding the Sentero that Renee had talked about, and Angie and I and Andy Jados have been having some conversations about our middle school and high school, it seems to be the years that the joy is gone. Like, elementary, there's joy in the schools, there's parents' involvement. And I have five children in the district. I've graduated now my second one. All have been done, have done very well with the education process, but what's lacking is our district's idea of promoting the whole-child development, inspiring and guiding. I'm asking you guys to instate the American pride and instate the opportunity to give children this high standard of recognizing what they're here for. If you're great in algebra, that's fantastic, but we are called to more. And I know in this community alone, there are churches on every corner. This community is grounded in faith, whether we want to speak it when we come into the school doors, or if we as Christians are going to leave it outside of the school doors. Me, as a Catholic Christian, I am not going to separate what I have been given as a gift because I'm in a public school system. I've heard from many administrators, many office staff, that my children should be at Christian school. I'm a taxpayer. I expect more than that, and I would like this board, that's founded by a lot of great people that I know, to not leave your faith at the door. Bring the Pledge of Allegiance back and give our students a minute to start their day and ground them. Let them think of what they've been given by the people in this community. So if you could please approve that to start our school year, let's see how that might inspire and guide and prepare our kids to prepare themselves for the day and hold that standard high. Dress code, distractions in the classroom, multicolored hair.
Thirty more seconds, please.
Things that are a distraction that do not hold our children to the high standard. When they leave the school and they get a job, there will be a dress code. There will be a uniform. So we need to give that to them now. And I'm asking you guys to think deeper. When we talk about the whole child, that's a great broad word, but a whole child is a mind, they're a body, and they're a spirit. And I'm asking you to foster that. Start with the pledge. Start with a moment of silence for prayer and meditation and for them to give thanks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Annette McMurray is next, 3690 Worthington Road in Galena.
Good morning, everyone. I want to start by addressing what Brad said earlier at the beginning of the meeting. I do think there's a lot of misinformation out there, and I think a lot of that misinformation is led by our media. I believe that that misinformation, that indoctrination is led by our media. I think the people that are here today are here because they're concerned about various aspects of our education. We've heard about Sentero's. We've heard about the Pledge of Allegiance, which I was flabbergasted that we didn't do that at the high school every morning. I think that we are here because we are concerned. There's a lot going on in our world. It's not just CRT. CRT is part of it. CRT is an ideology. We won't be teaching ideology, but curriculum that we may be teaching may have that ideology underlying in it. It's important that you, as the board, that we, as a community, pay attention. Brad, you and I had a conversation after our last meeting. I thought it was a really good conversation, and in that I did talk about how important it is that we, as a community, are engaged. We see it across the country. People are coming out, they're coming to school board meetings. We've seen meetings where they're out the door. Masks, CRT, all this is bringing people out. Our school board, every meeting should look like this. Actually, I think it should be packed to the back wall. I say the same thing when I go to my township meetings because I believe the only impact we can have is at our local level. This is our local level. This is our school. Everybody in this room, it's our school. You on the board, it's our school. Our teachers, it's their school. My parents, who no longer have children in the district but have, what, six grandchildren in the district, it's their school. My mom supports our district. Their taxes continue to go up for various reasons, but they will continue to support this district. But if we start to move away from who we fundamentally are and let groups like Sentero into our district, step back and close our eyes to the things that we might be teaching in our classrooms, when's the last time that we looked at our curriculum, that looked at it holistically to see what we are teaching? The reason that parents are concerned is because some of them have heard and seen things that they do not think is appropriate for their children in the classroom, even though some people were remote, actually probably being remote, allowed them to see some things that they may not otherwise see. I've asked my son personally that if there's anything unusual that happens in class or anything that goes against his beliefs, or who he fundamentally is, or how we raise our family, that he needs to bring it home and share it with me. I ask that everybody in our district does the same thing. Unlike days past, when I was at school here at Big Walnut, we don't get too much paper. We have the computers. Look at your kids' computers. Ask questions. Get involved. This is our community, you guys. That's why we're here, Brad. Yes, misinformation needs to stop, and I would encourage people to ask instead of accuse. I would encourage people to reach out to the board, and I would encourage the board to be responsive, which in my history with you all, you have been, and I appreciate that, and I hope that that relationship continues. This is a critical time for our country. It's a critical time for our community. We need to stand together, and we need to listen to what we, as a community, need and want from our schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Then we have Angela Graziosi, 7515 Marcy, Marcy Loop in Galena, on both Sentero and masks.
Good morning, Big Walnut School Board members, and Angie Hamburg. I don't know if I can even express anything better than what the residents that have got up and said. I plan to speak, and I just want to, I have some questions, just same concerns. My first question is regarding Sentero. This seems like an overreaching and progressive company in the business of pushing the agenda of casual consensual sex. Honestly, what parent would want to hire a company that states sex education for social change? This is in CECUS's, this is in their paperwork. I would like to know who hired them and at what cost? What is the cost? And why the school district feels they need to be in the business of parenting our children? I understand it is, you speak about the whole child. If you're taking care of the whole child, I'd like to know where do the parents come in on this? You have stated in the Big Walnut Examiner that mental health is a top priority of the Safety Committee. As a parent, I send my children to school to be educated on the basics, math, reading, English, science and history. In the Examiner, it says you were focusing on the whole child, the social, physical and emotional well-being. You state you plan to add several other mental health specialists to align with the national recommendations. One last question, why are we willing to, why are we aligning ourselves with national recommendations when in the Eagle Examiner you state, "Let's consider the perspective of our students in our community"? I don't feel that this is the perspective of our community to have this sex education like this. I would like to see where the parents have asked for this mental health involvement in our, overreaching mental health involvement in our children's lives, because I know I have not asked for this. I'm also completely appalled that we'd be having teen vaccination clinics in the school with many vaccines offered, to include the Pfizer COVID-19 vaccine for ages 12 and older. This offers no privacy and just creates divide among the children. As we know, this is a hot topic, this is a political subject. I am just disgusted that this is even in our school. This is for the parents. This is not the school's job to vaccinate our kids. As you know, this is an experimental shot. Why on earth would we be providing this to our youth, who are at a very low risk from this illness? If parents so choose to vaccinate their children, let them do that in the privacy of their own doctor's office, not in our school. If we are to inspire and guide our children, let's do this with consistency through thoroughly researched companies in curriculum. We need to guide them and inspire them to have high moral standards, not indoctrination by educating them for social change. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is it.
All right. One thing I would kind of echo, obviously, we've got some things to come back and be able to speak to, but I'm right there with Annette in the discussion of having folks participate and having it a discussion and being participatory. And so I appreciate the fact that there are so many people in the room today, and I appreciate the fact that they're sharing their thoughts and their ideas and their concerns, and, you know, please keep being participants and please being a part of the process and please talking to the people that have the opportunity to do things to impact those things. So I appreciate you all coming out today. Thank you. That brings us to item 11-1, to recommend to the board approve the settlement agreement between the Board of Education, Big Walnut Local Schools, G4 Sunberry LLC and Carroll's LLC. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Steve, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Leanna. Jeremy, anything you want to talk to with this one?
This is, as you know, we did have some Board of Revision complaints that we issued that meet the criteria, and this is a settlement agreement that was proposed by this group to settle the matter. And I think it's a good thing, and I recommend it, and that's, I think, I've talked with most everybody individually if you had questions, so.
Okay. Anything else for Jeremy on this item? When you're ready.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes. Item 11-2, it's recommended the board approve the resolution to accept material terms of one Ohio subdivision settlement pursuant to the One Ohio Memorandum, understanding and consistent with the terms of July 21, 2021. That's a lot of 21s. National opioid settlement agreement. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Leanna. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve.
So this goes back a ways, where our state has entered in with other states to reach a settlement with Big Pharma regarding the opioid epidemic. I apologize, late notice on this, but I literally got it just the other day. There is a document that we need to sign to be part of the overall group of Ohio, and this resolution is to authorize us to enter that. So I think I mentioned to the board in sending out other various documents that I received with this. There's definitely no guarantee that we will get anything from this, but if there is a settlement and funds come, this would allow us to potentially get some of those benefits to be able to put back into various programs to fight addiction and drug use, so.
Okay.
That's what this is.
Thank you.
So I saw Franklin County Commissioners are meeting today, an emergency meeting. I assume same topic, anticipating $8 million for the county. If I read our paperwork correctly, we're going to get the county, not we, the district. Somewhere in the neighborhood of $970,000? Am I reading that correctly?
If you were looking at the allocation sheet for Delaware County, that sounds right. And I know as part of the paperwork, what we're trying to get onto is they're trying to get 95% participation. I believe there's a bonus structure if more come on.
Meaning more political subdivisions.
More political subdivisions, correct.
So that's not a guarantee for money for this district, per se?
That is correct.
And has there been any conversation about the allocation of, and again, I'm sorry to be asking these questions, kind of top of the moment, but as it came through late, I was just wondering.
Yeah, I am not aware of any specific allocations, and if you look through the allocation sheet, at this point in time, are all township, cities. Within the settlement agreement, we can be a party to it as what's called a special district. So that was one of my first, in looking at all the information, it looked very city, county-driven. I think Sunbury is on there, and I didn't see any school districts at this point in time. I think it may be kind of a second wave as we're looking at the settlement, or a potential settlement. There's nothing that has been settled, actually.
But the resolution right now puts you in the queue or lends the voice to the idea that
Correct. It gives, it is us signing on to this one Ohio so we could be a party to a settlement.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes. Item 12, Human Resources. You don't want to do a report today, just item by item? Sounds good. Item 12-1, it's recommended the board approve the following resignations, and those listed within, I'm not going to read all of them.
Mr. President, I recommend taking 12-1 through 12-7 inclusive for the purposes of consent of
So there is a motion to do consent from 12-1 to 12-7. Is there a second?
So moved.
Thank you, Leanna. Jeremy, whenever you're ready.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes. All right. Item 13, schedule the next board meeting. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is 6:30 here on August 19th, and still streaming as always. Item 14-1, it's recommended the board enter executive session to consider the appointment of a public employee or official. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Steve. Is there a second? Thank you, Steve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Sheri. When you're ready, Jeremy?
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
We do not anticipate taking any public action coming out of executive session today, so we'll be ending up right now, then adjourning after executive session. Thank you all for coming out today. Have a great day.